That's three to one. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, number four, is a public hearing, it's an appeal, and I'll let Beth start off with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to introduce this item, on August 31st, the Planning Commission approved a request from Mr. Rob Cozile to modify the conditional use permit at his establishment at 3841 Old Hamner Avenue. The approval will allow the service of food and alcoholic beverages on the existing outdoor deck and front fenced area. The Planning Commission's approval was subject to several specific conditions. On September 8th, Mr. Cozile filed an application and paid fees to appeal the Commission's approval. Last week, he provided a list of specific conditions that were placed on him as part of that action that he opposes. The documents related to the item have been provided to the council, as has Mr. Cozile's letter identifying the items he opposes. This is an appeal hearing where the council sits to make a decision on that appeal. Steve King will provide an overview of the Planning Commission's action, and then Mr. Cozile is present to address the council, and then they could take any questions after they speak. Steve?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just upfront, I want to state that the important in this discussion is the adoption of the resolution by the Planning Commission to approve Modification Two does not supplant the resolution that approved Modification One. Both of the resolutions are still valid. And that's in Condition Number Two of the resolution that is before you tonight and being the subject of the appeal. The conditions that the appellate is asking the council to consider tonight is, the first one is Condition Number Fifteen. It's a requirement that the applicant provide a lighting and photometric plan for existing conditions, and if needed, provide new lighting to address the concerns that were brought up by Project Review Board. This was a request from the Sheriff's Department, our Project Review Board, and also from planning. Sheriff's Department wants to make sure that there is enough lighting for security reasons, and planning wants to make sure there is not too much lighting so it's not intrusive to surrounding properties. And that was the reason for that condition, and we both feel that it still is a valid condition, it needs to stay in. The second is the applicant is appealing Condition Number Nineteen, which is a requirement that security cameras provide complete coverage capable of recording the entire interior, the entries, exits, kitchen, front and rear of the bar and all customer areas. This is a repeat of a condition that was in the first resolution that I just spoke of. So it's not a new situation. The Sheriff's Department feels that it's an ongoing compliance, not compliance, it's a condition that needs to be in compliance with continually, and so it needs to be kept, and they want to keep that condition. The third one is Condition Number Twenty, which is a condition that all security equipment shall be able to record reasonably sufficient quality images to enable law enforcement personnel to identify persons in mix and models of vehicles. The applicant is appealing it based on the fact that it already exists, which it did. This is another repeat condition from the last resolution. And also, a new sentence was added to this one stating that unedited recordings must immediately be provided to sheriff's staff upon request to assist in official investigations. And the applicant is opposed to that because he doesn't have somebody there 24 hours a day. Nonetheless, the Sheriff's Department feels that this is an ongoing condition that needs to be complied with continually, and they are recommending that the condition be kept. And the next condition is Condition Twenty-One. It's a condition that requires that the deck only have access from the interior of the restaurant and the front fenced area also. That's the subject of the Modification Two where food and alcoholic beverages would be served. This condition states that the access to those areas are only from within the interior of the restaurant or from the main entrance into the restaurant. And that to prevent the transfer of people and potentially alcoholic beverages directly from the deck into the parking lot without having to go through the restaurant first was a safety condition that was recommended by the engineer, or excuse me, by the Sheriff's Department. And they do recommend that that condition be maintained for the project. And one of the issues that's come up in relation to the gate is that the per fire code and building code requirements, if there's going to be an automatic locking gate as it's conditioned now, which is at the bottom of the steps that lead down from the raised deck and at the north end of the front fenced area, those would be two automatic locking gates. If they are automatic locking gates, they need to have emergency panic, panic, panic.
Hardware.
Hardware, there you go, thank you. And the applicant is, or his appeal of that condition is the fact that there's going to be people on the outside of the gate and people on the inside of the gate, which is true. But the primary reason for the gate is to keep people from going directly from the parking lot to the deck. So we still are standing behind the requirement of that condition. The next one is Condition Number Twenty-Two, a requirement that acrylic panels be installed around the deck in question and the front fenced area to prevent easy transfer of potentially alcoholic beverages out of those areas where it's now going to be served. This was a requirement of the Sheriff's Department, and they state that this requirement is necessary because of the applicant's request to permit the consumption of food and alcoholic beverages in such close proximity to public roadway and parking lots. So they are still recommending that that condition be maintained. Next one is Condition Number Twenty-Three. It is a condition that the applicant needs to provide title reports showing easements to make sure that there are no utility easements underneath where the deck was constructed. And so we still stand behind as staff, and we think that's a valid condition and still should be complied with. The next one is Condition Number Twenty-Four. That is a condition, it's a standard condition that's applied to all conditional use permits. It basically is a statement that, it states the reasons that a conditional use permit can be revoked and the grounds for revocation should a conditional use permit get to that point. And the primary reasons be being that violation of any rules and regulations of the city or in conditions of approval that was adopted by the Planning Commission, or the operation is being conducted in a manner that's contrary to the peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Again, this is a standard condition that's applied to all conditional use permits, and so we're still, we're recommending that that still be maintained as part of the approved project. There's two more. The next one is Condition Number Twenty-Five. The applicant is appealing that condition, and it is a condition that that restricts the consumption of alcoholic beverages on the outdoor deck from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. This was a condition that was added by the Planning Commission based upon input and recommendation of the Sheriff's Department. We, so we still stand behind that as a condition since it was added by the Planning Commission. And then the last one is Condition Number Twenty-Six. The condition states that heating fixtures shall be prohibited on the outdoor deck. And this was added by the Planning Commission. The wording of it probably wasn't the best. And the fire chief looked at this and basically decided that the real issue is an open flame, and so he'd be comfortable with changing that condition to say that no open flame facilities would be allowed on the deck. And we concur with that recommendation, so. With that, basically, we still stand behind all of the conditions with the exception of the change to Condition Twenty-Six that I just talked about. And I will conclude my presentation. Can you answer any questions?
We'll let the applicant, Mr. Cozile, come up and speak, then they can ask questions.
Before Rob speaks, you can ask questions to staff.
Okay, Rob, you're closer anyway. Target for first?
Steve, I got one on the patio deck. It says that the shall have plexiglass panels shall be installed all around the existing railing and fencing around the outdoor deck. Where does that start at? Does that start on top of the rail or does that start on the floor?
No, it's the height, we could reword it.
Three feet, right.
Well, the height is three feet above the railing, but it would be basically to prevent transfer of alcoholic beverages through the fence as well. So technically, you're talking about a six-foot acrylic panel from the bottom of the fence to three feet above the fence, assuming that the fence is three feet high.
So you're talking from the ground up?
Right.
I disagree with that. I could see where you might have some plexiglass or some type of paneling across the front area to separate it a little bit from Sixth Street, but not in the other area because.
Remember, this is the questions of staff.
This question, okay. All right. Utility, the one number twenty-three on the engineering, the utility easements, don't we presently have it in our code where that if you come and get a permit for a particular item, you can put something in the utility easement area with the understanding that if any utilities ever come through there and it has to be torn out, you're responsible for it?
Yeah, that's what would happen now. Because the deck itself didn't need a building permit, oh, I need to add one thing on that, and I will soon as I answer your question. Because the deck did not need a permit, there was never any search to see if any utilities were underneath of that deck. So what would happen, say for instance, a, some utility came in and said, "We have to get into an easement we have that goes through that deck," and they take the deck out and go in and get to that easement. And can I add one thing to my presentation, just so it's clear? I did make a mistake in my presentation to the Planning Commission, and I stated that the stop work order was issued on the deck because the applicant did not approach staff first off to see if they needed building permit for the deck. That is incorrect. And I take full, it wasn't intentional, it's just I wasn't involved in the early parts of the project. So the applicant did indeed approach staff to find out if the deck was okay and would or would not need a permit. So I clarified that in my presentation. I made a physical change to the staff report for the file forevermore, so I just want to state here that it was my mistake, and I apologize.
And just to add a little more clarification to the easement. The city is not vacating any easements or utility easements for any of their utilities or ourselves, so if there is a utility underneath, everything will stay status quo. Typically, anytime anybody is building anything in the city, we request that they submit a plan showing or their title so we can research the utilities to make sure there's no conflicts. If it's in a, if it's similar to a driveway, if utilities go in there, Steve has already said, you're going to rip out the driveway, the utility's going to go in there and make the corrections or whatever they need to on the utility. So there'll be no change essentially. It's just something we typically request anytime there's one of these type projects that come through.
So this, this one here, number twenty-three, wouldn't apply then?
Oh, we'd still like to have a, you know, we'd still have to acknowledge whether we'd still like to acknowledge whether there's an easement or not. If it, I mean, it's not something we live or die by in this case. The deck exists already. I mean, it's not going to change that fact whatsoever. It's just something we typically request anytime there's any type of work done on a property. We'd like to make sure that the property owner's aware of what they're building over or what they're encroaching upon, that's all. So, you know, if you're asking the question whether it has to be there from our standpoint, this, no. The easement's still going to exist if it in fact exists at all. We just don't know that.
Okay, and one last question, Steve, on number twenty. What does immediately mean, provided to the sheriffs, talking about unedited recordings must be immediately, there will be times when the place of business is closed, and the owner may be readily available, or it may not be at home, or how, what does it mean?
I believe what, George can buy a little bit more of please. The unedited recordings must immediately be, that's basically stating, he said the business is open. Somebody there actually has access to these recording devices. If we had an incident and we needed to view it to make sure that we had all the parties involved, that's the immediate access of it. We understand that the business is, at times, be closed or somebody is not there to provide an actual physical recording of it until maybe tomorrow. But like if we are there for, you know, assault with a deadly weapon or something, and we want to make sure we have all the parties involved, that's where the immediate viewing of comes in.
Yeah, that's understandable, so just worded, we changed a little bit, maybe?
Although, again, it's a little bit nitpicking, but upon request means that they have to have asked somebody. Meaning that there's somebody there. I mean, if there's nobody to ask, then upon request, it's someone meaningless. Wait till somebody gets there to ask.
Kevin?
I have a couple of things. Item fifteen, number one, the lighting, the parking area, was it approved by Jim Daniels previously?
Yeah, what happened was the, this is actually another repeat condition. The resolution for Modification One had a requirement for the lighting plan. We never actually did get a lighting plan, so what Jim did, the former director, he went out with a light meter to the site and determined that there was enough light.
So it's been approved, essentially. What was the reason that they did additional lighting? How long ago was that when Jim did that?
You know, I don't know the date, I don't know the exact date, I'd have to look it up. The reason why it was included again is because the use of the deck is intensifying from just being a smoking area to an actual eating and drinking area.
Have you seen, have you seen the lighting out there, either one of you two guys? Do you consider it safe as it is, or have you seen it?
I have not seen the current lighting in that area. James, I haven't seen anything recently.
Okay, all right. I'm asking, I'm necessarily, the panning gates, that's kind of a safety issue? Or you're just trying to make sure that in an area that's not?
Yeah, what happened with the gates is there was kind of a chronology of things that occurred with the gates. When the deck was constructed and it was determined, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure someone's going to tell me, but the way I recollect and the way it was explained to me, when the deck was constructed and it was determined that a building permit would not be needed for the deck, but would be needed for the railings and the stairs, that's when it was determined that there would need to be something to prevent people from going directly from the parking lot up onto the deck. And in addition to that, there would have to be compliance with American Disability Act requirements, which means basically people with disabilities have to have exactly the same opportunities as people who don't have disabilities. So they would have to have some access to that exterior deck or access to something equivalent to that deck. So what was done, instead of requiring a ramp up to the deck and then requiring a gate in front of that ramp, which would have negated the ADA requirements, they allowed this front fenced area so that there would be compliance with ADA, and then, so the gate was still required to prevent the direct access between the parking lot and the deck. In the latest go-around, it was explained to me by the fire chief that if they're automatic blocking gates, then they have to have emergency panic hardware in order, and that's how that evolved, so.
I have a question for Rob when he comes up on that one. On item twenty-two, it says, "This is not a requirement for other businesses to sell food and alcohol." Is that a correct statement? Do you have other places in the city of Norco where you have made this requirement?
This is the acrylic. Yeah, what's happened, I'll give you businesses that are similar in nature. What the, the problem is, we're talking apples and oranges because businesses are different, they're located differently. But just to give you an idea of what's been done with other businesses. Saddle sore, they are not allowed to serve alcohol on their deck. They have a smoking deck that's in front of their business, and it's screened in with screening material. That deck is about 20 feet away from the right-of-way, so there's quite a distance, and there's a corral between the deck and the trail. Rubio's, it's about 10 feet between their outdoor deck to the sidewalk, and they were required to put in acrylic panels on that one. Chipotle has an outdoor, and Rubio's does serve beer and wine. Chipotle serves beer and wine. They have a distance of about 14 feet to the sidewalk, and they were not required to put in, because of that distance, they were not required to put in acrylic panels. And they've got a pretty significant sloped, landscape slope there also. So because of that distance and the landscape, it was determined that it wouldn't be needed there.
On the right-of-way, did Jim Daniels tell them they could put the deck where they put it? Is that a correct statement? Did he actually say? See, I'm kind of confused now because you said he did the light meter, and this is prior to the deck. But then, did Jim Daniels tell them they could put the deck there? Did they do the lighting? I'm confused, I'm sorry.
No, the light, the light, when he went out with the light meter, it was after the deck. This was it.
Okay.
And the, did Jim tell him he could put the deck there? I don't know. There's no record in the file of that, so I don't know.
You already answered that one, Stan. The standard time is 11 o'clock the norm in the city of Norco that you?
The, well.
How did they arrive at that time?
It came from a recommendation of the Sheriff's Department, and the Planning Commission agreed with it and adopted that as a condition. Is that typical? No. Chipotle's doesn't have a time restriction on it, nor does Rubio's. And, well, Saddle sore can't serve alcohol, so it's a different situation. So that, no, that's, that would be, as far as I know, at this point, that's unique to this business.
Okay, and then, what do you mean flameless heater? Does that mean, is that one of those standard things that?
Mayor, for them and council members, there's a couple of ways to do that. One, as you commonly see, would be a roof or wall-mounted radiant heater. Our concern is anything that is setting on or floor-mounted on this deck that essentially is a one-down deck that may be non-conforming, may didn't have, maybe didn't have to have a permit, but certainly if it was constructed today, we would have it constructed differently with some fire-resistant materials. So there's ways to install the heaters, we just didn't want them on the floor deck, and especially where they could be knocked over, the propane-fired ones in the next life.
So there are alternatives for him to heat that deck, meaning?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. By the way, the Planning Commission did a great job on this. I was really, I was really pleased. Thank you.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, back on that heater. Like a portable UL-rated propane heater would be acceptable to you?
Not if it is a freestanding. If it was permanently mounted up off the deck where it would be like a radiant heater, something that could heat the area. We're concerned with something on that deck that gets knocked over, and we've got some kind of fire impinging on that deck itself. So we'd like something that's permanently mounted, high on the walls, on an overhead, something like that. Something that can't be knocked over and impinge or start fire on the deck, especially with its condition, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Steve, on the deck itself, what is the basis that the deck was not required to have a permit? Was it a height? What allowed that?
Because the deck itself was under 36 inches height, it did not need a building permit. The railing did, and the stairs did, but the deck itself did not.
Then the stairs are open to the parking lot? Can you, from the parking lot, can you access the outside deck?
Yes.
And on, I think it's item nineteen, on the security cameras, if that item was to go away, would not the first resolution that we have still make this valid? This is just a repetition, correct? So the first resolution would have the same condition?
Yes. And the reason for, the reason why we didn't repeat all of the conditions, we just repeated some of the ones that had some significance from the last resolution and some concerns and would have, looked like they would have an issue of importance with this modification too, so.
And then, I don't know if you'll remember or not, but way back when on planning, when we did have discussions with Saddle sore, I recall that it was mentioned that if they ever did want to have alcohol or food on their deck, that we would require them to screen that.
Yes. And they actually did at one time apply to do that, and then they withdrew it before it ever came to Planning Commission.
And there was a change of ownership at the time and all of that?
Correct.
Thanks, Steve.
Advantage of both combined, the one thing I'm confused on is this number twenty-two, the height of the acrylic or plexiglass panels. You're talking about not less than three feet, and somebody was talking six feet a while ago. What, how high is the railing around this deck?
It's three feet, but to make sure, yeah, it's written kind of convoluted lately. The intent was that if the railing is there for less than three feet, they still have to at least go three feet above what the railing is. So if, for instance, the railing is at two feet, the maximum height of the acrylic would only be five feet. But it wasn't meant to be just acrylic on top of the railing. It would have, it was, the intent was it would also block in front of the railing also.
So if it's three feet, if the railing's three feet tall, why could they not get by with just having that lower three feet enclosed instead of going up?
Just because of people standing up so they can't pass things from deck to parking lot or from the deck out onto the sidewalk.
But the, when you walk down the stairs there and you walk right out into the parking lot, there's not a fence around the dividing it from the deck to the parking lot?
Yeah, there's, what there is, is there's a, I should have put the picture. Yeah, there's, what there is, is there's a, I should have put the pictures. What there is, there's a deck with the railing around it, and then the stairs go down the deck. And then, where those stairs go down, there's a front fenced area that also has a three-foot railing around it, and that's the ADA compliant part of it. So, the acrylic would be required around the deck and around that front fenced area both.
That can keep them from going from the deck to the parking lot?
Right.
Okay. That's all I have. Harvey, one more?
Yeah, now I'm really confused on it. On the parking lot to the outside deck, I thought you said just a little bit earlier that he was required to build a, an enclosed area for the handicap, which is, is it just built on the front or is it built alongside of the deck also? Doesn't the stairs come down into that area?
Yes.
So, they don't go directly to the parking lot?
No.
Okay. Because I understood you say a little earlier that the stair did go from the deck directly into the parking lot. But they don't?
They don't. You have to go into this front fenced area.
So, now, is the acrylic, how high is the wall around the enclosed area for the handicap?
It's three feet.
So, you wouldn't want the acrylic all the way around that too?
Correct.
And we were talking about Chipotle, you know, they don't have a locking gate with panic hardware on it. They there many times and you can go in, you can access the outside patio from the parking lot just walk right through. So, that wasn't a requirement of them, huh? Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear from Mr. Cozel, the advocate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On my appeal, I'll try to make it real brief since Steve's gone over everything. On some of these items, it just has to do with the additional wording, such as with the security cameras where they said that they have to have immediate access to the recording. Well, we've always given them access to where you can view it. We don't have people there that can change it from a hard drive and save it and then give it to them on a disk usually until the next day when the secretary comes in. And that's how it's been done in the past. Now, there's a sentence in there that basically says anytime that we're open, you have to ask somebody that knows how to operate the system, which would mean somebody else would have to be there. And it's just that one last sentence that I would like to see taken out, not any of the rest of it. And if they want to duplicate those other items, well, that's fine. And then on the gates, we're talking about two different areas that have the same purpose. You can have alcohol and food in both areas. And now, separating them is a security gate with panic hardware. And I don't see where the need is because you can't go from the parking lot to the deck without coming through the first area anyway where you can have a beer. So, if you have a beer here, now they're saying to get that beer up on the deck, you need to take the beer inside and go out through the side door to get up to the deck. I don't think that that's necessary at all. I can see the panic hardware on a side gate going from that area to the parking lot, yes. But not from one area to another where you have the exact same functions going on in both areas. So, I don't think having the gate at the bottom of the steps is necessary. As far as the acrylic paneling, in the staff report, they only addressed acrylic paneling from Sixth Street to the deck, not necessarily all the way around it. And then, the sheriff's department brought up that they wanted it all the way around. I would like to see something other than the acrylic paneling because then the air can't freely go through and it, you know, become real hot during the summer. So, they allow something else, either some kind of lattice work or some kind of horse fencing or something. That's what they're worried about getting drenched past through there. But the raised deck in some areas, well, the rail on the inside is about four feet high and it's raised about two feet above the ground. So, it's about six feet high to the top of that rail if you're standing on the dirt outside. And then, they want to go another three feet, just so that somebody can't hand something over. You know, I don't really see that happening. I can't see somebody paying three dollars and twenty-five cents for a beer and handling, handing it to somebody outside over the fence when they can get it for a dollar and a quarter from the AMPM and do the same thing and walk out the door. And if they wanted to take it from my place out into the parking lot, they may openly stick it under their jacket or in the purse and they'll be able to do the same thing. So, I don't think that that's really going to become an issue. I would rather see if it becomes an issue, then address what can be done to prevent it. Location of the security cameras, I don't mind moving them because our trees have definitely grown up and they've gotten a lot bigger. And that's one thing that affects our lighting, is that we don't have lighting underneath the trees. We try to put it in between so that it still hits the ground. But to have a lighting study, I would prefer to have Steve come out and say either that lighting is adequate or you need more lighting on the deck. That would make a lot more sense as opposed to some kind of lighting engineer. Do the same thing that Jim Daniels did. And then, you know, ABC says that you can't sell alcohol from two AM to two, or just from two AM to six AM. I would prefer that those be the same requirements I'm allowed to have in the business as well as the deck. Because if you have people out on the deck and then all of a sudden at eleven o'clock, you have to send people out to like clear them out and make them all go inside, you know, I don't think that's fair because other businesses don't have to do it. And, well, I think we would probably be the only business in the history of this town that ever had that type of a condition. Not that they're picking on me. Oh, speaking of being picked on, one thing I didn't cover was item twelve. But I didn't cover anything on the first fourteen items, but it was twenty-six. But item twelve of the last sentence, you know, I don't know if that's appearing in all the city council or all the CUPs. I'm sure the councillor here is pretty aware of it. But it has to do with, if you folks decide to do something to me, not that that's ever occurred before, but I have to pay your attorney's fees. But I think for everything being fair, it should be that if you don't win, you pay my attorney's fees. If I have to pay your attorney's fees, wouldn't that be the only fair thing? No? But anyway, I would like to see that stricken because for me to pay for staff time and attorney's fees because they decided to do something not right, I mean, I'll be paying my own attorney's fees to defend myself. Can you justify that?
Can I justify you paying your own attorney's fees?
Why, I would pay your attorney's fees.
Actually, Rob has a point that that probably does need to be a string. But generally speaking, the law now is that while you could certainly require that the prevailing party is entitled to the payment attorney's fees, it does cut both ways. Thank you.
Well, I consider myself a winner on that actually.
Rob, Rob, you don't get off of these, you gotta answer questions. This is gonna be a test. Harvey, you'll start?
Well, I'd just like to clarify a couple of them. One, you would be okay with the one gate. I can see where the gate on the stairway would be redundant, you know, it'd be the same thing.
Oh, yeah, the same thing.
And let me ask the sheriff's department again, or ask the fire chief, I guess. On the heater, I've been many, many places where they have freestanding heaters with the, the bottom of them is pretty heavy so they don't tilt over. You've got a hood over the top with the flameless, I mean, the fires protected, not an open flame. Is that something that you wouldn't allow sitting on the deck? Don't you want it to turn over?
That's correct. We would not allow a freestanding, non-permanently mounted heater that could be turned over. We would require it to be permanently mounted so that it could not be tipped over.
So, if it?
And that's because of the condition of the deck and its construction parameters and materials. If this was a concrete slab, as we commonly see in other ones or an asphalt slab or something, that would not be a point, but because of the condition and the materials.
So, if something permanently mounted could be a base on that particular type of heater that's freestanding could be screwed through to the deck?
If it could be securely mounted, we could certainly consider that.
Okay, thank you.
We just don't want something that's freestanding knocked over.
Right, I understand it. On your, on your business, I've been down in that and taking a look in that area for a long time. Do you, I thought today when I was passing by there, I saw a corral outside. Is that alongside the deck?
Yes, that is west of the deck for horses.
So, is that kind of like Saddlesore, there's additional room between the patio area and the parking lot? So, you couldn't just walk right up to the deck there?
Oh, no, you can walk up at all to that side without going into the horse corral.
You couldn't do it on the south side because of the freeway fence, right?
No, no, the south side would be Sixth Street. It goes up the...
I mean, where's Sixth Street? The freeway, the fence along Sixth Street, I mean.
Well, the chain link fence stops right where our fence.
So, you wouldn't be able to walk up on that side of the deck either?
Well, yeah, you can go from the sidewalk down the slope. There's ID and stuff in there and then you can get access. But the fence would probably be about five to six feet high at that point.
And how about on the backside, on the east side, I guess? You'd have to go all the way around your building and come back through there before you have a fence across the back?
Yeah, it comes up about that high, the top rail.
All right, thank you. I, I saw the question, I still wanna make some comments later, but we're going on.
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
Everybody's got questions, so.
Kevin?
To both of you, what kind of security are you gonna have at that gate? Are you gonna keep somebody at that gate? I mean, you know what, I think of you as more of a club as opposed to a bar, quite honestly. I mean, a bar is people come and go. But you, I haven't been there during this op, I guess I have, but not inside, so I don't know what you do. But do you keep for your, do you keep security?
Yes.
So, there's security at that particular gate that would have panic hardware?
Yeah, right now, oh, at that gate, not where the panic hardware would be. We normally, right now, have them at the front door, just outside the front door. So, we're just gonna move them from the front door, about fifteen feet out to the opening that goes into the parking lot from the fenced area.
Steve, are you, instead of doing an expensive lighting design, which I guess it's the expense you're worried about, what would be the problem with you going out there and making sure it's safe? And actually, I'd feel pretty comfortable if you guys went out and determined whether or not it was light, maybe to save them some dollars so you can... And then, the difference between lattice and acrylic? What's the, because I've been, because you know, he's right. I've been to places where they have acrylic and it does get hot. And I'm wondering, is there a difference? The problem is the lattice is not as strong as the acrylic or what's the objection to acrylic? By the way, what kind of scares me frankly is it's all wood and people will be smoking out there, right? That makes me nervous. So, what kind of lattice are we talking about?
Well, this is a sheriff's department condition. We're not opposed to lattice or acrylic.
Would you have trouble with lattice, a vinyl lattice as opposed to?
I would think with the lattice, it's something that is easier to bypass, tip apart. My opinion is with the, I think with the sheriff's department, with the acrylic, you know, I realize there would be some kind of wind restriction, but aesthetically it looks fine. It gives people inside, outside visual of what's coming and going where the lattice restricts that. You know, it's, plus if the lattice is out of wood, I think we'll be looking at some fire condition problems.
Council, I was just recognizing, we do have the sheriff's captain in the back of the room. So, if there's additional questions or any additional questions you have for him, he is here as well.
And that's all I have.
Do you have to add to that, Captain?
If I may, strictly on the subject of acrylic, it wouldn't be fair to the applicant or whoever did the report to comment on this specific instance. But as far as acrylic goes, the reason we like acrylic is strictly because we can see through it, whether it be from a distance, from a tactical standpoint, but responding to something anywhere, if it's acrylic, we can see through it at all times. If there's a lattice, there's still an obstructed view as far as the heat and whatnot. Typically, in a lot of places, you know, the acrylic's not a solid sheet all the way across. It's in, whether it's two feet sections, three feet sections, and there's a gap between there, which would allow some air down along those ways. So, my only comment would be the request for acrylic anywhere over lattice would be the unobstructed view through the material.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, it's all set to make the case for lattice work, Rob. Unless you can give me a counter to the captain's reasoning, I was gonna support you a hundred percent on lattice work. And item number twenty, would you accept in that last sentence where it says, "Unedited recordings must immediately provided to be changed to unedited recordings to be provided to the sheriffs?"
That would be fine. We normally provide them when they ask for them the following morning.
Steve, you have a problem with that?
Yes, sir.
Or as soon as reasonably possible.
Unedited recordings to be provided.
That's what we do now.
The concern is that there needs to be some language that says that, I mean, Rob wouldn't get unhappy one day or when he sells it and retires, said, "Well, we'll provide them, but come back in three weeks."
But we could strike immediately and you'd be happy with this?
Yeah, but I don't think that solves the problem, that's my point.
It does for Rob, doesn't it? You're agreeing to that?
Yeah, but it doesn't solve the problem on the city's part.
Well, it still says upon request.
Upon request.
Yeah, but it doesn't say when the request is granted.
Well, we normally, they can do them right away.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think anybody's suggesting that Rob isn't currently doing the right thing. We're pretending that either Rob or we are here and that somebody else is running through and says. And all I'm suggesting is that you add language that says, instead of immediately, which that probably isn't reasonable, is just as soon as reasonably possible.
What's happening, John, is you and I and Rob were reverting back to years ago where we spent months and months doing this exact thing. Rob, you made a comment on the one outside, not the gate by the deck, but the other gate, that you don't have a problem putting panic hardware to that?
No.
Okay. And I think we just talked about condition twelve. And with the last sentence. Are there any others that we haven't mentioned that we're concerned about? I think we've covered them. That's all I have right now.
Okay, Rob, what is your normal hours of operation?
Well, you get those two a week normally, it's from two to two.
Two in the afternoon till two in the morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you don't open in the morning and serve breakfast and stuff like that anymore?
No. We used to open for lunch, but there's too much competition over there now.
Two to two, and who put the eleven PM closing time on the deck? Whose condition was that?
Planning commission added it on the recommendation of the sheriff's department.
Well, why would not, men that be, I mean, what's an hour?
Yeah. City council, we're not opposed to, you know, I just reported on those, how it came about.
Right, well, I didn't understand that. And with his hours from two to, two to two, you know, I wouldn't say an extra hour on the deck at night because I'm sure that there's a lot of places that, I know there's a lot of places closed at midnight, but I don't see one of them that they need to get off at eleven o'clock. But that's just my opinion there, so. Anything else you want to add, Rob?
Uh, no, sir.
Alright, thank you. And Will?
Thank you.
You bet, Rob. Probably hearing now, Carl's first card is Bernie Cholwalt.
Thank you. I just have one question. On his security camera, did I understand right that it records twenty-four hours a day? Is that right, Steve?
Yes, on the exterior ones. And the sheriff's department works more closely with them on that, so maybe you should direct it to them. My understanding is yes, they do.
Primarily with the recordings, most businesses, they record twenty-four hours a day just in case of break-ins. And there's always the accessibility to review to see who's trying to work into the business.
Okay, I see he didn't have a problem with that, but I would have had a problem with having it recorded twenty-four hours a day. But under that circumstance, yeah, but just his open hours, I would think would have been adequate. Other than the fact that he's looking for break-in people too, so. But for that to be something that the sheriff's department would put on him, that he has to record when he's not even open, that would be his responsibility. I wouldn't think that would be the sheriff's department. The other thing is the screen around the deck. Why couldn't he use a wire mesh screen? You have visibility through a wire mesh screen and it does the same thing. It keeps people from feeding stuff through because it's like half inch squares, one inch squares. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Bernie. Karen Laird?
Just a couple of comments. The, typically, I have some background in construction. So typically, when you have something going from one intended use to another intended use, it's not uncommon to have to meet upgraded codes. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for a upgraded ID setting. I don't think it's, some of these things are not unreasonable. As far as the acrylic panels, they make a lot more sense than maybe the wood or screen because of potential fire. Plus, he was talking about how hot they are with the acrylic, so that eliminates his opposition to number twenty-six, which was the heaters, because he's now created his own heat. So I guess, you know, that would make a lot of sense to do the acrylic. I've seen situations where people on a bar will pass it out just for a sip, just to a friend out there that just needs a little something to drink. So I would agree with the opinion that they need something completely enclosed, so they cannot pass it over. I've seen it then. Saddle sore did come in and the ruling was that they would have to have something, so they could not pass it over. They opted not to do that for ownership reasons and things like that. The restriction on the hours, to me, doesn't make any sense. It's a business like any other. And if he's following the rules, let's make it the same rules for everybody. Let me see, is anything missing?
Thank you, Karen. Margaret Williams?
Just a comment on the acrylic, and I have not been there, but my understanding now is you have a decking that's made out of wood. You've got smokers out there and hopefully, Rob's hoping there's lots of people out there. You've got one gate for an exit, what if there's a fire and you have that acrylic around there? Is the acrylic breakaway? How would people get off of that deck? In case of a fire, there's one exit, an acrylic all the way around.
Thank you. That's all the cards are. Okay, Chief, you want to answer that question for me?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. The number of exits is based on the total occupant load plus the number of exits required for each room or space. So because there are numerous small spaces, two outdoor patios, several small rooms inside, each one's required to have at least one exit, but only required to have a minimum of one exit. And then the whole configuration is required to have two exits, and they do legally have those required exits. It's a little bit disconnected because of the way it's all been built up with the different rooms, but it does meet the code provisions for required exits.
And I have, before we bring it back up here to counsel, I've got one more question for you. Like counsel Sullivan was asking about permanently fastening outdoor heaters to the deck. Now, don't they sell some fire retardant material like a mat or something like that? That it would allow him to put a heater out there and he could set it on this fire retardant mat and then bolt it down and it'd be safe where it wouldn't go through and catch the wood on fire?
There probably are some materials, but the cost would be prohibitive. It would probably be cheaper to take the decking up and just put in some form of a formed end in concrete slab than the cost of that. We've looked at some other materials where you could treat the wood. The problem is, is some of the spaces, it's almost like a spaced decking, where the cigarettes can fall through the crack. There is some debris underneath it, some leaves and junk and stuff like that that concerns us. Again, that's one of our primary concerns, is if you were building it today, we could say, okay, put a subfloor on it where the cigarette butts and stuff can't fall down there and smolder, or treat the material on all sides. Right now, without tearing up the deck, you can really only treat the top and some that could ooze down into the cracks. So Mr. Cozel has been wonderful to work with us and say, okay, you know, if it's reasonable, I can come back and I can treat the deck and stuff like that. So we're working with him to try and do that the best we can without tearing it all up and building it from scratch again.
Well, what I was talking about, it might be a three foot by three foot pad thing to set it on. He could set it on the deck and then set the stove, the heater on, on it, instead of doing the whole deck. Just set that one area, then the heat wouldn't go down below and just stay like a little hard or something there.
And if it was, as councilmember Sullivan indicated, you know, what you commonly see, the tall one with the radiated umbrella on it, in its upright position, it's not a problem. It's only when it gets knocked over if the propane continues to burn. So we can secure the heater probably in some means, or if it was a low heater, like you might see a wood stove concept. Certainly, that's where you put the underlying linoleum at line break or something to prevent it from radiating heat. But we certainly can work with Mr. Cozel to determine what can be permanently mounted that doesn't get knocked over, that doesn't burn right on the deck itself. That's not the problem. It's just we wanted some conditions and as Mr. King's indicated, we can work with that. And maybe the wordiness isn't as good as it could be, but we know with that, we've discussed that with Mr. Cozel, and we can work through that item.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'll bring it back to counsel. Greg, we'll start with you.
Chief, on that heater, so clear on it, the umbrella type would be acceptable as long as it's strapped or permanently affixed to the wall, it's... And it can't be tipped over the railing?
Well, yes, sir, wall, floor, decking, someone, we're confident we can do something to do that.
Alright. On the gate from the deck to the lower space that also has a gate. I guess maybe I'm a little unclear on why are we requiring that gate up on the deck? Because you were talking about accessibility, now we're exiting into basically another room. So couldn't, I don't see the reasoning for the gate on the deck, because then you would consider it all one space.
The intermediate gate between the two decks is for patron control, so that you can't just go back and forth in there and circulate around, move with alcoholic beverages and things like that. And the only thing that changes is that if you put a gate on that has no latch, it doesn't serve a purpose. It's just a flopping gate there. So when you put the gate on and you add a latch, then the gate must swing in the direction of travel, so you would be essentially exiting from the upper raised deck to the front deck area. The gate has to swing in that direction. And the latch keeps people from going back to the raised deck. So if you put a gate on or a door and you put a latch on it, then that latching device has to be panic hardware. So essentially, you walk in the front area, but you can't get to the raised deck without going through the restaurant and have some controls and things like that. But you can always exit from the upper deck into the lower deck and out to the patio. If you put a gate and you put a latch, it's got to have panic hardware.
Right. Do you understand what I'm trying to say on the exiting part? That basically you're exiting from one room to another room and you're not, just have clear access there? But now with that gate, does that help Mr. Cozel with controlling his occupancy? Would that keep whatever Rob's occupancy is, two hundred and some or whatever?
It is two hundred eighty-four ton. It won't change the occupancy.
I mean, does it help him control it?
The gate helps control it because you can't go from the lower patio to the upper patio without going through the restaurant and having control by the restaurant management of what's going on as well. So yes, it does that. And the exiting essentially goes out towards the parking lot. It's a little awkward because there isn't a gate at that front entry, it's just an open space. And you walk into the front and then into the building and then out onto that deck area. It's just because it's been added on and that's just the configuration that it is. So staff's certainly working with the security provisions that we need for the management and obviously law enforcement. And the exiting configurations. If you were building it from scratch today, you'd build it totally different. This is just because it's been added on, so you've got to meet all the provisions that we need and, you know, the safety provisions plus all the provisions that the owner needs, so.
And you're confident in all the life safety aspects?
Yes, sir.
How this has been proposed?
Based on these conditions, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Ken?
I have one more question. Well, how do we come up with the eleven PM? What was the rationale behind that?
Well, unfortunately, sir, I don't have an answer for you on that. I was not involved.
Well, ask your boss, maybe he knows. Sorry, I don't need to pull rank.
I don't know specifically, but I would offer up. Obviously, our intent is not to hurt any business in town. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but normally in a condition of use permit, there is a provision, and I believe I heard it mentioned, that if the applicant doesn't follow through with all terms of the conditions, it can be revoked. Is that correct? Is that in this CUP? I'm probably going to get blasted by everyone who put work into this from our department, but to be honest with you, I'm not opposed to it. I don't know the reason until it's told on the clock, unless I heard specifics otherwise. That provision at the end allows us to take action at a later date if determined necessary.
Well, what I'm at with this is I think that, like every other business, I think Rob has the opportunity to go two to two. The problem with the heater is, is that people move them. That's how they fall over, so I want it to be secured some way. I want to go with the acrylic. I don't know how much the lighting report would cost, but if Steve is comfortable and you two gentlemen are comfortable looking at the lights, it's got to be safe. It has to be safe. You know, unfortunately, alcohol does get passed. People can laugh, they can think it's funny, but alcohol gets passed. And, you know, most of the people being killed in Marco in our streets, unfortunately, have taken drugs and have been drinking. And so I really don't want that to happen. That said, I don't want to, I don't want to impact your business in such a way, so that's why I like the acrylic. I think only one gate's necessary because I think going from the one room to the next room, I think as long as there's one at the very end. You know, the title report in terms of, so essentially what would happen is, is are you asking him to find out where all of those things are, that easement?
You know, it's a typical request, and that's all it is. Anytime there's any tentative improvements or anything else done on any property, Kevin, I mean, that's really where we're at.
And I think Bill would indicate, in this case, since it exists, all that would happen is that we and the owner would know, Rob would know where the utilities were, but if we didn't know and a utility company came in and said, I got one under there, they still have it and the deck has to come down.
Yeah, there's no change at all to the conditions of the easements. We're not vacating easements, we're not relieving any of the responsibilities, so, you know, at this point, it's a new...
And normally the reason required upfront is because something's being constructed, and so you could take into account the construction vis a vis the location utilities here to somewhat move.
I think everything else for me would stand, so that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Alright.
See, we've talked about the gate, so we're okay with one gate. We're okay with the lighting. Talked about the save, it has to be saved, and I agree with that. I believe this condition has been going home for a long time on that deck without all its requirements. Now that he says to have food and alcohol out there, it's, the conditions are changing considerable. I don't, I mean, I agree with, I like the sheriff's department, I agree with them when they say it's nice to be able to see into a place, but you can't see into the rest of the building from the street. You know, so if he was building a six foot high wall all the way around it with enclosed where you couldn't see in it, I don't see, the acrylic is very expensive. And it changes color after a few years. It can get broken and cut people. I see some other type of material, chain link fencing or something like that around, but I don't see it. And I think there's a lot of areas there that just a plain fence to keep someone from accessing it there would work. I think there's a whole lot of changes here myself that need to be taken into consideration. And I would really like to see this come back and cleaned up and all of the ones that are redundant, take them off, you know, because the modification one included a lot of discondition that are on here. So I guess the only one that really we haven't come to a total consensus on is the acrylic. I don't have it, but why are we treating this place any different? I mean, of course, this is a place that serves food and alcohol. I just was down at Chipotle's a couple of days ago and I had margarita and I sat out on the patio right next to the wall. And when I got finished, I threw my cup in the trash container and walked out the gate. No latch and hardware on it, no nothing, I mean. And I didn't even notice what's on the west end of Chipotle's there, how close it is to the parking lot, to the entire place that's next door to it, so. I just see us putting conditions on this particular business that, normally we put on a brand new business, when it's opening up, you put all this, when they come back for a modification, I think we're probably going a little too strict. We're not doing it to all the other businesses in town. And I agree with Captain Felton, however, on the hours, it should be treated like any other business, so. I'm not really sure what to do about it now because it's so, with the words that need to be removed, so I wouldn't really know what we were proving, if we approved it tonight.
I think from my perspective, that the council needs to give staff some consensus and staff can redraft some of the conditions. Because I, like you, would prefer to have specific language so that it's not, well, we know what we mean, but I'd like to see what it says in line.
Come back in two weeks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, um, I, I think that the hours ought to change myself. It's the eleven to eleven, it's not open at eleven. It should be able to go two to two, just like the rest of these, uh, business in there. And, uh, I like the idea of the metal screen around there because then you've got visibility plus it's cooler in the summertime. You've got the, uh, breeze coming through there and you're, if it gets on fire, the wood's burning, the metal screen's not gonna burn, the acrylic will melt, glass will blow up and everything, so, uh, with that, I guess I'll accept the proposal. Greg?
Couple of things since, uh, John sug- suggested, uh, direction for staff. If I may, I just, I'll, I'll throw out my two cents just by the numbers, uh, going by Rob's letter on item fifteen. My first question, just for Steve, um, that deck was existing when Jim did those photometrics, didn't he?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's how I recalled it. To me, item fifteen, I don't see any reason to do a, a new photometric plan. That deck was always there when Jim did his, uh, pseudo-photometric plan. Um, on nineteen, uh, I don't think, that's a repetitive condition. That's in the first resolution, I believe. I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that. Item twenty, uh, Rob agreed to a change in verbiage. Item twenty-one, uh, even though based on what the chief said, I think one gate would be sufficient with, and Rob agreed to panic hardware on that. Item twenty-two, I agree with Burlman Harvey on, uh, a different material, but I would also like it to be reviewed by the sheriff for the, the life safety element, uh, when that the captain brought up about being able to see through it. Either like you said, wire mesh or expanded metal or chain link, something that would not block the vision for an officer. Plex glass can be yellow out for a couple of years and everybody's smoking out there anyways. And twenty-three, on the title report, it's a non-permitted deck. I, I don't see where that one would be necessary. That one doesn't give me any heartburn there. And twenty-four. That one's a repetition also, isn't it, Steve? In resolution number one? So I'm, see, my feeling is not to have item twenty-four. Item twenty-five, I agree, Rob's business should be treated like everyone else and his hours of operation. It should fit. If he's open till two, it should be to two o'clock. And we've talked enough. I think we know what to do on the meeting fixture. Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, you making a motion?
Absolutely.